She's, yeah. And then she comes in and says she's not sure she wants to do that. And I said, well, why not? She said, well, I'd give up a lot of flexibility. Right now, my schedule is reflect. It's like, well, for the next six months, but in six months, you're gonna have to make a decision anyway, so.
Yeah.
They want to.
Fred, can I also?
I think he wants you to go into his office. He wants you to walk in right there, meet him.
There's worse places to be locked up.
Yeah.
All right. Good evening. Welcome to July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting in the Norfolk City Council. We'll call the meeting to order and call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If you now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
What do we do?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Granquist.
Here.
Arnns.
Here.
Webb.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Snorton. Fawcett.
Here.
Hildebrand.
Here.
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I'll be abstaining from this vote.
So moved, Your Honor.
Motion second, no discussion, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, Granquist, Arnns, Webb, Muren, Fawcett, Hildebrand, abstaining, McCarthy, motion carries.
Right, would look for a motion to approve the full agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the full agenda.
Second.
Motion second, if no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, that takes us to item twenty-seven, under Special Presentations on the Council Agenda, we've got two proclamations tonight. The first is a proclamation for the ARC of Norfolk's seventieth anniversary. And the proclamation reads as such, whereas the ARC of Norfolk, a nonprofit, self-advocate, and parent-driven organization with one hundred and thirty-four members, is celebrating seventy years of advocating for the rights of citizens with developmental disabilities and their families throughout northeast Nebraska. And whereas the organization came together in nineteen fifty-three, when little was known about the condition of developmental and intellectual disabilities or its causes, and there were virtually no programs and activities in the community to assist in the development and care of children and adults with disabilities or to support their families. And due to members' collective desire to raise children in their homes and their stubborn refusal to accept the institutionalization was the only option, the ARC was formed. And the ARC is a presence for direct advocacy in school systems, assisting families in ensuring a free and appropriate public education, and with adults in navigating the Developmental Disabilities Division of the Nebraska Health and Human Services. And the ARC of Norfolk runs a variety of programs and provides workshops, training self-advocates and their families, and organizes social and recreational programs that involve approximately three hundred and fifty individuals. And the ARC believes that every citizen, regardless of his or her developmental or intellectual disability, has the right to live, work, learn, play, worship, and serve others within the local community, and also believes that with the proper supports, a high quality of life is possible for everyone. Now, therefore, I, Josh Moaning, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, do hereby congratulate the ARC on its seventieth anniversary of advocating for the rights of citizens with developmental disabilities and their families in our community. All right, there's a number of people here tonight who is here to receive the proclamation for the ARC. It can be any or all of you, and I'd ask you to come forward.
Well done.
Whoever's at first gets to make the speech.
Oh, oh.
Looks like that's you.
Well, thank you for being here. It's a big deal, seventieth anniversary for the ARC. A lot of hard work has been put in, and a lot of people over the years. You and the entire community have this program. So we're very glad to have you, and we're proud that the ARC is here in the community, and we're proud to congratulate you with this proclamation. So let's get a picture, and then if somebody actually does want to give a speech, look at you, Beth.
Beth!
Come over there.
Yeah. Sean, move that little.
She was, she was. Bless her.
Is he in the long spot?
I don't know. Person here? May I change? Oh, she's.
Good.
Okay. The second proclamation tonight is for declaring July two thousand twenty-three as Disability Pride Month. And the proclamation reads as such, whereas Disability Pride Month is celebrated every July and is an opportunity to honor the history achievements, experiences, and struggles of the disability community. And whereas it marks the anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, landmark legislation that broke down barriers for inclusion in society and ensured the civil rights of those with disabilities. And Disability Pride is accepting and honoring each person's uniqueness and seeing it as a natural and beautiful part of human diversity. And Disability Pride seeks to change the way people think and define disability and to finally end the stigma of disability. And Disability Pride Month is a spotlight to honor every kind of disability and the wide range of supports they need to thrive and the barriers that still exist. And Disability Pride Month is an engaging opportunity for the community to become allies to those who experience a disability in their community. The more Disability Pride is celebrated, the closer we are to the most inclusive world. And we believe that disability is a natural part of the human experience and in no way diminishes the rights of individuals to live independently, enjoy self-determination, make choices, contribute to society, pursue meaningful careers, enjoy full inclusion and integration into the economic, political, social, cultural, and educational mainstream of American society. And whereas the City of Norfolk joins communities across the country in celebrating the landmark American with Disabilities Act that was passed in July of nineteen ninety, and Disability Pride Month. Now, therefore, I, Josh Moaning, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim July twenty-third as Disability Pride Month in the City of Norfolk and encourage all citizens to take due note of the observance. And who wants to receive the proclamation this time? Okay.
Thank you.
There will be a Disability Pride Festival at the YMCA that day.
Well, what day is that?
It's a Saturday from eleven to one, held at the Phil County.
Okay.
A variety of activities.
Very good, thank you, Beth. Thank you all for being here. All right.
Or the twenty-ninth.
July twenty-ninth?
July twenty-ninth.
July twenty-ninth, okay, at the Y. Very good. Again, we appreciate you all, all for being here. All right, that moves us on to item twenty-nine, under Public Hearings and Related Action on the Council Agenda. I will open this public hearing to consider approval of the Class C Beer Wine Distilled Spirits On and Off Sale Only Liquor License Application for Eldorado Hills Golf Club, doing business as Eldorado Hills Golf Club, twelve-twenty-seven Eldorado Road, and the manager application of Susan O. Fuhtman. And to open the hearing, Brianna, please.
So we received an application for a Class C liquor license for Eldorado Hills Golf Club at twelve-twenty-seven Eldorado Road on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. This is just a replacement license. I'm on, should be. There is already a Class C liquor license at this location, but a license under a new entity requires the process, the application process, to start over. Background check has been completed by the Norfolk Police Department and is attached to the agenda packet. The next item on the agenda is the resolution approving or recommending approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, who ultimately decides on issuance of the license. And representatives, representatives of the application are here if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you, Brianna.
There may be a clerical error there possibly. Your middle initial, Sue, is that D? Okay.
To correct that further. Record. This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so, including the manager applicant, if you'd like to. Okay, all right, or her representative. Counselor, good evening.
Mr. Mayor, counsel. Look at that applicant I got. Appreciate getting the moment to stand up here. As a lawyer, you don't always get to bring the good things, so I get to bring you a good thing. And what I'll tell you about is, is let's talk about the bigger picture. You know, this has been in the news quite a bit in all forms about Eldorado Hills, and I get to bring a positive report. Folks have stepped up, you know, we haven't had to come seek dollars from the city or the county or things like that. This is something where the community, the neighbors in total have saw what a community asset Eldorado Hills has been. And, you know, let's cut to it, it's a recreational thing that's available for all of northeast Nebraska and more. It complements all of us, it is a private, it's not a private golf course, so our public play can occur. They have stepped up in a large sum of dollars to make this happen. And basically, this is just one of many steps that have happened and will need to happen to bring it back to its fullness. With this being said, the Class C liquor license is the same license that was held previously. This is a new liquor license that's gone through the Liquor Control Commission because of the fact that this is a new entity. Just for purposes of background understanding, Eldorado Hills Golf Club is a not Nebraska nonprofit corporation, it is not a five oh one C three, its sole member is the Eldorado Hills Community Association when they bought out the club some years ago. So that's the entity that's holding it, it'll be the operating company going forward, and the holding company will remain Eldorado Hills Community Association. So with good news, they're going in the right direction, and you know what a Class C is, they want to do what they've done before. And I know they've already hosted a tournament, they're back open again, they hosted recently the Aaron Lunn Memorial Tournament with thirty-nine teams on a rainy day during a drought, perfect time to open, and they're also open up for public now. Next step is to try to get themselves up and running as far as a manager and open the clubhouse. I have with me this evening, behind me, some delinquents, also the board of directors and their officers, as well as others, so if you want to raise your hand, who's in support this evening of all of this, there's a lot of them, so. So community asset, we're just here to just help us along as we continue our steps forward. I'd entertain any questions, but I would definitely request that you at least cross-examine my applicant, that's all I ask, so. Any questions for me before I sit down?
You guys could probably use a beer after all the hard work you went through to get that thing running again.
Will Dave Ruckel play?
Well, yes. When you don't say no, that's a yes. You're right, a lot of sweat equity has gone into this, not only money, but sweat equity.
Right. Well, we appreciate that report, Tim, and the efforts of all who have been involved in this resurrection story of this important community institution. So I know it's not, it wasn't easy, and I'm sure it took a lot of work and investment from a lot of people, but it got done, and it sounds like it's going very well so far. So we're happy to walk through with, walk through with you on the steps to get it fully back into business, so, thank you. Again, it is a public hearing, if anyone else wishes to make comment, they can do so now. Okay. Hearing none, I'll move to close the hearing and proceed to item thirty. Look for a motion to consider approval of Resolution Number two thousand twenty-three dash thirty-six of the Class C Beer Wine Distilled Spirits On and Off Sale Only Liquor License Application for Eldorado Hills Golf Club, doing business as Eldorado Hills Golf Club, and the manager application of Susan T. Fuhtman.
I will offer consideration, approval of Resolution Number two thousand twenty-three dash thirty-six. Second.
Motion's in a second. Any discussion or questions on this council? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash thirty-six is adopted.
Congratulations. Moving on to our regular agenda, item thirty-one, we look for a motion to consider approval of the Revised Maintenance Agreement Number nineteen with the Nebraska Department of Transportation for calendar year two thousand twenty-three, and authorization for the mayor to execute certificate of compliance at the end of two thousand twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to consider. Second.
Motion second, for some background on this, Steve Ramis, our Public Works Director.
Mayor and counsel, every year we renew an agreement with the Department of Transportation that discusses how we are compensated for maintaining the sections of state highway that bisect our community. In two thousand twenty-two, the Department of Transportation and I are engaged in conversations about the history of this agreement and the fact that the agreement historically was not representing the way we were conducting business. And so we started talking about adjusting that agreement at the same time we were talking about the two state highway segments that do bisect our community and the condition of those streets. Ultimately, that conversation led to three or four projects being added to the state's six-year transportation improvement plan. Those include some mill and overlay on eighty-one, some concrete repair on, on two seventy-five. But as a result of those conversations, neither Kevin nor I moved an agreement forward for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two or calendar year two thousand twenty-two. Therefore, when the two thousand twenty-three agreement came through, that agreement originally went through as a renewal, but because we had skipped the two thousand twenty-two agreement, we need a new agreement. So this in front of you is the new agreement. And once, once approved, would, we would receive our reimbursement for calendar year two thousand twenty-two as, as well as two thousand twenty-three when that one's due.
Thank you, Steve. Steve, are there any substantive changes to existing agreements with NDOT on any of this?
So what we were talking about was historically, as far back as I could trace the agreement, the city had performed the maintenance, we were responsible for performing the maintenance, and then we would be reimbursed for that maintenance from the Department of Transportation. The agreement has some check marks in there and some section As and Bs. Historically, the way the agreement was structured was the department would do the maintenance, and we would reimburse them. So we, not functioning in that way, you know, we wanted to make the change and get the agreement to the way it was functioning. As a function of that, you know, engaging in substantial conversation over about a four-month period just about the general condition of our state highway segments, and like I say, ultimately, Kevin took some projects forward for us, and we agreed to, you know, he understood that we were going to be stepping up our maintenance program, that we were adding asphalt maintenance equipment, rollers, hot boxes, and that type of stuff, and that we would be getting staff trained, and so we were comfortable continuing to move forward as, as we were doing the work, and just agreed that, you know, it was beyond our ability to get that back into the condition it should be, and, and so they stepped up on their doing that, and so, kind of some of the history behind there.
Very good, thank you.
Does this maintenance also include snow removal?
It does, yeah.
Mowing and snow removal?
This, yep.
So I was looking at enclosure thirty-one, page one forty-two of one fifty-three, and I just saw the surface maintenance was checked, but snow removal wasn't.
Yeah, it, I'd need to look at it in some, in some detail, but it does, just give me a second here.
Or is it just included in the surface maintenance agreement?
No, just give me one second here, and I'm pretty confident I can put my finger right on that. Keep going. So, snow removal, I've got, I've got to think back on this one. So we are, we are required to do snow removal, I believe, per state statute, if I, if I'm recalling that correctly. So this agreement. Oh, what I want to say. This agreement sort of subsidizes state statute with snow in terms of snow removal. Probably the best thing for me to do is follow up with you on that, but we are required to do the snow removal, and we are compensated back for that. And then this agreement adds back in the, the sweeping, the mowing that we do, it does require maintenance activity in terms of the mill and overlay, the joint seals, that type, that type of maintenance activity, draws a line in there between what's maintenance a little bit and what's reconstruction. There's a certain, there's also a certain amount of striping that the Department of Transportation does, and then anything over that is described here on page one forty-four that we're required to do, things like turn lanes, turn narrows.
I was more concerned about the snow removal portion.
It, I can, I'd have to follow up with the councilman on that, but I assure you, Kevin and I did go through all of that so that I clearly understood our, you know, what our maintenance requirements were and what we were being compensated for. If it's not in here, I would say it's, it's required by state statute on those road segments. I'll follow up with you.
Fair enough. Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Steve on this?
Steve, when they say they have a two thousand one hundred dollar reimbursement per lane mile, what's our cost?
I would have to dig into our asset management system and tell you exactly what our cost per lane mile is on those two highway segments. You know, it's, that's a conversation that, that we're having as well. You know, it's, when you, when I personally look at the amount of maintenance that it takes on those, if you throw in there a mill and overlay on a twenty-year cycle, I don't, I don't believe that the compensation is quite adequate. You know, twenty years at a hundred thousand dollars, you're looking at about two million dollars. It'd take all of that to mill and overlay, you know, the asphalt sections of those roads through, through the community, so where's the other compensation come in? That's an active conversation, you know, that I am having with, with the department.
So prior to this, this is the first time we've received reimbursement, or?
No, we've been receiving reimbursement for years, so we had an original maintenance agreement nineteen, I'd say that goes back probably thirty years. That agreement's been renewed every year. And the structure of that agreement is, in the front of this, it talks about three different ways we can do the maintenance and get reimbursed, the state can do reimbursement, and then we pay them back, or we can negotiate, you know, what maintenance does each party want to do. Historically, we have done the maintenance and then been, been reimbursed, and so the department was not really interested in looking at a different method there to move to them doing the maintenance and us reimbursing them, just like everybody else, they're short-staffed and trying to get their projects done. So they were pretty adamant, they wanted to stay on, you guys do the maintenance, we'll reimburse you.
And you said that some of this stuff is kind of beyond, I don't know how you said it, you said some of it's kind of beyond us, where we would have them provide some of the?
Once it goes beyond maintenance, generally maintenance within a, within the municipal side of our standards, our state standards, anything more than two inches, so if we have to mill out three inches or four inches or full-depth mill and that type of stuff, then that's beyond maintenance, and they come back in and do a reconstruct or some sort of a three-hour project.
And that's, that's reimbursable from the city, then?
No, they would do that on their dime.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then do they have, they've gotten in contact with you about any type of scheduling as far as, because we've got some major spots.
Well, the mill, the mill and overlay is, the mill and overlay is scheduled for their fiscal year, I think their fiscal year twenty-four, which means it would probably be bid out next spring. That would go from roughly Pazwalk to South Airport Road. They'll do, the area from Pazwalk north through the community would be more of a chip seal type project, but on a DOT chip seal, they come through and they, they restore anything in the sub, subsurface or, or pavement section that needs to be fixed, repaired, and then once that's all repaired, then they'll come through and do their chip seal on it. So that is scheduled, I want to believe, and I'll report all this out in our one and six-year plan that I'll take to a public meeting here, I think we're scheduling that for the week of August twenty-seventh, but I'll take all that out for public, public review and comment. I think fiscal year two thousand twenty-six is when they do the chip seal, and then fiscal year twenty-eight is when they're doing the concrete repairs on Highway two seventy-five.
So in the meantime, some of those, like?
So in the meantime, you know, in the meantime, you'll see that our street crews have been out there now with their, with the hot box and roller, doing some more significant repairs on eighty-one, getting that centerline joint filled in so that that's not just continuing to ravel and fall apart. They've been focused on getting as much hot mixed asphalt, you know, into our joints and spalls and stuff going on around town, trying to get, again, just touch as much as they can on our road surface. When they circle back around some of those areas, they'll probably get in there with like a twelve-inch mill and do a mill and inlay on those joints. Right now, we're just trying to get as much touched as we can. I think I mentioned four projects they were looking at, there's a signal project they're going to be doing as well, replacing some of the signal infrastructure and technology throughout the two seventy-five and eighty-one corridor, so I haven't had a lot of engagement with them on that project, but I hope that brings some pedestrian safety enhancements as well.
Steve, on eighty-one, you said mill and overlay twenty-four Pazwalk to, how far south?
Goes Pazwalk to South Airport Road is my recollection.
Okay.
So pretty much the entire city component, the city section.
Steve, this talked about two seventy-five and eighty-one, but what about thirty-five coming into town?
Thirty-five would be part of that as well, and we just annexed a major portion of that on the east side, but that, that is now part of our, it's part of our centerline miles that we report back to the Department of Transportation.
Does that, does that stop at the roundabout, or does that go into town, like down Norfolk Avenue, any part of that?
Our centerline miles go all the way up, almost all the way up to Benjamin Avenue on thirty-five Channel Road, and then they certainly come into town from the roundabout east or west towards the levee, yeah.
I'm just asking because of the, you know, that center area.
I'm just asking because of the, you know, that center area with the curb and the bridge and the bridge deck that's eventually going to need to be.
That's all us. We do have that bridge deck, I think, at 2027, fiscal year 2027, starting to design that for a bridge deck replacement. I don't think that median's going to last that long. We're going to need to look at kind of chipping that median out and doing some sort of temporary patch, maybe even just an asphalt patch over that median to get us.
But that's not part of the highway anymore, is that what we're saying? It's not part of Highway 35, it's considered?
No.
City?
It's city.
Norfolk Avenue?
Yeah. Yeah. Old, that's old 275, but yeah, it's all city.
All right. Any other questions? Any public input? No further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item 32, we look for a motion to consider approval to Word of Contract at Custom Ice Incorporated for the construction of an ice rink at Johnson Park for an amount of $284,303. Okay, motion second. And for some background and an update here, we'll hear from Nate Powell, our Parks and Rec Director.
Mayor and Counsel, actually, I'll be asking you to table this until August 7th, but I thought I would go through a few things with you beforehand. One of the things that came up, we've been struggling with finding a, a general contractor to oversee this project, so we're going to have to go with two subs, which would be customized in a, in a concrete contractor. But we were able here at the last minute to find someone that is interested in talking with us to be our general. So I'm going to be meeting with them tomorrow, and hopefully that works out. If not, we'll go back to our plan, our Plan A, and we'll see if that works out. If you have any questions about the, the process here, this was out for bid back in March. We received one high bidder, Housman, and that bid for the ice rink was $548,000. We went back out to bid in June, and we didn't receive any bids for the, for the ice rink and the fountain. So we're here now trying to negotiate with some contractors to find someone to actually help us do this project. It's, there's two specialty projects, and so it's a little bit difficult to find someone interested right now. Everyone's busy, and that's really the main issue from what I'm hearing. So Housman's bid was $548,000. Our projection, our budget is $425,000. JYO's estimate is $377,000, and we're hoping to be right around $350,000. And so that'll put us a little bit under budget if we can get this through. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, I've got one. So as we talk about Johnson Park, and it keeps coming up in front of us, I know there's a little bit of fatigue, obviously, with talking about the park over and over again and different things that are being improved. So could you clarify why we keep seeing this come in front of us? Because we're used to prevent, you know, approving a general budget for a particular project, right? And usually, once you approve that budget, then you don't see things coming up over and over and again. And so maybe Josh could help with this too, but why we keep seeing these items come up in front of us after we've already talked about the initial, like what, what Johnson Park was all going to cost? You know, how, how, why is this different than how we typically do things?
Yep. So we went to bid for the, for the Johnson Park portion of it. That would include the bridge and the park, the, the northern part of the park. But that bid went, came in too high. So we're splitting that up into phases. The ice rink and the fountain was one phase because there were specialty items.
Yeah.
So we also have the grading as another phase, and electrical is another phase. So we're phasing these out to find the specific contractors that can do that type of work rather than having one general trying to coordinate it all.
Yeah.
We're doing the coordination efforts on our end.
Yeah.
We're basically coordinating, we would do this, we would coordinate it anyways. We'd be involved through the whole process behind the scenes, but you're just seeing us actually doing it because we have to keep coming back to council every time we have something that comes up.
Right.
So that's what we're doing differently. Normally, you would just see a change order or something like that, but we would have, we have to bring each and every bid package to council.
Yeah. But the way it comes across, it comes across as an addition to the overall project, if that makes sense.
Yeah. And it is not an addition. These are, these were all part of the original bid package.
Okay.
Yep.
Appreciate that. Thanks.
With, Nate, with your recommendation, I'll just make a motion that we table this.
Okay. Motion to table in a second. And please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. This contract is tabled.
Mayor, there's some folks here that were in support of it. I didn't know if you want to give them an opportunity to just talk about it.
Now that the motion has been approved to table, we can't do that, but it sounds like ideally we'll be back here August 7th to discuss another bid, ideally with a general contractor. So we appreciate your time, but we will have another, another opportunity to discuss at that date. With nothing else on the council agenda, we are adjourned. Thank you.